What do you have now webinars?
Uh, it's a long story.
All right. You okay? Ish. All right. We know if there's anything I can do.
Yep. See you, bud.
Hey, Rob. You can see your time.
I didn't have my volume was muted. You did a nice job at the at the FinCom meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. A great group of people here. Nah, just a great group of people.
They sure are. And I just got done with my LaMoin people. We just did our budget. So.
Oh, yeah.
But we started at five and just got done. So. Figure I'd jump on and.
Terrific. Well, it's good to see you.
Mute myself and turn my video off and but it's good to see you.
You too. You take care of yourself.
Yeah, you've gone really.
I'll either see you Monday on the 25th of March or Tuesday on the 26th. I don't know which one.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it. I requested the Tuesday, but it'll be whatever Glenn suggests. And but you've done a, you know, from a distance, you've done a remarkable job both in Somerville and here. And it's it's really impressive to watch you. So I just want to let you know that.
Well, when you've been doing it as long, my first year in teaching was 67. So.
Yep. My first teaching year was 77. So you got me by 10.
Yeah.
Very impressive. So I'm gonna unmute myself and actually mute myself and just throw my name up on the board. So.
Okay.
Have a good meeting.
I'm gonna do the same.
All right. Take it easy.
Thanks for joining us today. We're going to be taking a little break from work. We'll be back in a minute. We hope you enjoy your time. Thanks for joining us.
It was called this meeting to order at seven ten P M. Any comments, changes, feedback? To the guests.
Everyone had an opportunity to review our meeting minutes from um. The orders when he said both the budget here and the regular. Yeah. Any comments, changes, feedback? I don't have any. If there are changes, thank God, I'll make a motion to approve the public hearing F Y twenty twenty five school department budget. Uh Tuesday, two twenty seven twenty four at uh six forty P M. And also the committee meeting minutes on seven twenty seven twenty four at seven eleven P M. Do you have a second? Is Gina on you?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Gina, all in favor? Hi. Hello, everyone, welcome.
Would you like me to acknowledge the visitors for you, Ms. Chair Karas? I'd be happy to. Uh tonight, joining us, we have Ms. Madeline Fadera, our kindergarten teacher, Ms. Nancy Cagiano, one of our preschool teachers. Ms. Lane, your colleague, as well as Rob Lebo, I believe a candidate for the superintendentcy.
Yes, hello, everybody, welcome. I'm moving on to correspondence and community and is anyone received any correspondence with me? I have not.
I haven't received any correspondence since the last meeting.
Would any members of the community like an opportunity to make any comments? All right, going once, going twice, moving on to the examination and authorization for the bills.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the packet, you have a bill roll that totals seventy two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and twenty two cents. And when I'm done with my brief explanation, I respectfully would ask a member of the school committee to make a motion to approve that much. Uh I went over the bills with a fine-toothed comb this week. And they are um very typical, we have utilities, we have special education fees. We have uh Amazon Capital Services, which are all educational supplies and materials. Uh we have uh sea tie for our lunches. Uh stop and shop for foods that are not core lunch food, but things like. You know, oranges and apples and bananas and and fresh produce. Uh Instant Alarm has done their annual uh check of our alarm system and found it to be uh excellent. Uh one of the things that um I'll 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 talk about that later. We're gonna get new batteries in the alarm system. Uh Amanti has been here, I'm trying to leave the uh building in as really good shape as I possibly can. So one of the things that uh we had done is there's gaskets in the big giant hot water pipes that come from the boiler. They need to be re- replaced every ten fifteen years, I've had them done, so. The there's the boilers are set now. Uh for uh quite a few years, because I don't think they have those gaskets have been replaced since two thousand seven. So they were when the building was renovated, so they were getting old. And that's it, I mean, there's lots of different ways of special education tuition is being paid. Um I mean, you know, the same collaborative Easter seals, uh Swan Scott. Marblehead. Northeast Collaborative, so there's four or five different service providers, but they're all special education services. So Madam Chair, unless there's a question on the bill roll, I again ask for a motion to approve seventy two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and twenty two cents.
Can I have a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the bill roll and the amount of seventy two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and twenty two cents, and that is. Um labeled one of five in our packet. Do you have a second? Gina, second.
I'll second that, sorry, I'm not quick with unmuting myself.
All in favor? Hi. Okay, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh the first thing I'd like to report on this evening is the update on the security and safety grant. Uh just as a reminder, we got a fifty thousand dollar grant uh from the legislature for safety and security for this year. Uh the window film has been completed. The parking lot fencing and the bollards to protect the children and staff in case of a runaway car has been completed. The um transaction window outside of the main office has been upgraded and completed, and that was a two-step process. We had the flimsy Plexiglas that slid by replaced with a three eighth inch piece of. Uh the type of glass that's on one of those big giant storefronts. Um and then we had the safety film put on the inside, so it's very secure. Uh we have just ordered new flip charts for emergencies, we ordered seventy five of them commercially done. Uh we've had a video uh camera update upgrade. Uh we've had the lock a locksmith here and we've changed all the outdoor key locks, so that when someone opens an outdoor. Door and pull the key out, the the door automatically relocks, so you don't have to consciously relock the lock. And we've had uh three automatic door changers replaced with new ones, because they were again two thousand seven. And that totals forty nine thousand six hundred and twenty dollars and fifty one cents.
Nice, very nice.
I'm getting close.
You wanna spend every last penny.
I wanna figure out how to spend that three hundred and seventy nine dollars and forty nine cents, and I will. But the school is a much safer place now and it's much more uh secure in case uh there's any kind of an attempt. At anything that's untoward. And Madam Chair, with your permission, I will defer to the principal or the principal's report.
Of course.
Which is in your packet.
Thank you, Madam Chair, super independent awesome. I'm happy to present this report to you, we have several updates tonight. Uh we are starting round three, our our after-school enrichment program, eh the uh signups have launched. This is run by Riley Edmonds and I support her in that. A very popular program uh funded by Esr Funds. And we uh we're having signups happen quickly again, we have uh James Lloyd running Lego Robotics, we have Miss Chaney doing some art. We have uh exercise programs, so a nice uh a nice spread of of activities for the kids and it's going well. So this will be the third and final last session for the year. I I'd also like to let you know that we have formed a teacher search committee for next year. We're looking for fourth grade teachers and a fifth grade teacher. And so um we've reached out and uh Ms. Anderson is on the committee. Uh Ms. McA- Ms. Um James's uh mother, Jennifer. I'm gonna think of the name in a second, her email is McKay, but that's not her email anymore.
Yes, uh Jamie and Jen, um yeah, I don't know.
As soon as you think about it, and and um and Riley Edmonds is also helping out with that. Um so that's uh much appreciated, thank you, Marsh, thank you.
Marsh, yes, I just thought of it all.
Yes, excellent, it's like a little puzzle we have here, a little game we're playing on a Sunday morning. Um so we have a nice committee, uh we're looking for folks, um looking for applicants. And it's early in the process, typically things happen, you know, at this time starting. So we get the best candidate when they're just fresh out of school or just looking. Uh we'll be doing interviewing starting next week, but we'll probably have several rounds over the coming months. Um given the number of app openings we have and the time of year that it is. Um and so we're looking forward to seeing who comes up. Uh the US, the United States Coast Guard Playground Reuse Project is ongoing. The equipment is down in Everett and it's being, it was sandblasted and is being dipped. Again, thanks to uh General and Julo for helping us get that down and back. And uh the equipment should be back up here, we're still waiting on design work, so the equipment is gonna be ahead of all the design inspection steps. Uh we have parent teacher conferences coming up uh this week, um Monday and Thursday are conference times for parents. And teachers are sending out invitations for those. Spirit Week is next week, Riley Edmonds is organizing that as well. Uh several, the rest of the days are coming out, uh the information was in the newsletter, so parents can start getting together their kids outfits. Or kids can get together those outfits, they have fun, it's a nice way to start spring and uh celebrate class spirit. Um i- in the summer, our enrichment program is uh still enrolling students, we had two more students enroll and now we're up to forty six. And the superintendent is beginning to offer positions for those teachers. And I'll be interviewing one outside applicant for one of the roles, otherwise roles are filled by uh certified teachers from Johnson School.
Oh, great.
We have a certified teacher who's applying from outside of the school, who's also an applicant for one of the grade level positions.
Oh, great.
Yes, and and a really competitive applicant as well.
Great.
Uh she's currently a reading fellow in Ipswich. And so I mean, she's graduated into college and she's getting her master's degree currently and will have it by the time summer program starts.
Great.
So high quality uh folks. We also um are integrating that with our special education program that we have over the summer. And um I believe Lydia Antrim is going to be our special educator for the program. So a nice team of folks and I I'm looking forward to it, we're planning to use a lot of the Lego gears, a lot of the um garden uh spaces outside. We have uh index cards with plants and their pictures on them, so students can do scavenger hunts. And the idea is really to get students writing and doing math, but around topics they love. And Legos, gears and and outside plants, hopefully those will um keep their interest. Um we have an after-school tennis program that I've been working with uh the Nahat Country Club on, and so that'll start in May. Uh signups just went out today and um and that's it's run by the country club, but we are facilitating it. So students will meet here, go over to the tennis courts that are right on Flash Road, not all the way up to the country club. Um but the coach is um familiar with that uh organization and um we're looking forward to offering that. Tennis is also gonna be offered in the summer. And so that'll be part of our, you know, just let folks know what programs students can take advantage of if we are in Nahat in the summertime. And so if you're interested in more information about that, keep an eye on the newsletter and it was on Parent Square. In the area of technology, uh we are looking for a technology support staff member. Uh Mr. Lockwood has selected to not continue in his role, he's been very happy here. Um but he has a number of other opportunities. And so there's a search underway, we've already interviewed a couple of candidates. And we're also considering the service that the town uses, which is called HiQ. And so they're putting together a grant, I mean a proposal for us. Uh they actually are the tech support for Boston Public Schools, so.
And and our town.
And our town, exactly, right, right, yeah, to me, to me, the idea that they know how to work with students, know how to work with one-to-one devices. And teachers um was the big piece that said, wow, this is great. Uh I'm sure and you know, it's great when you can work with adults, but to know kid software, the problems that schools could have. And security, if you've been following the news on um on, you know, cyber state and safety and all those types of things. Uh so we're looking at our options, considering what the best one is, and um I'll bring something to you at a future meeting.
Okay.
Uh Chrome O S Flex, we're still working with this new operating system. Uh the projectors are giving us a little bit bit of a challenge and uh it's a new, it's a brand-new operating system, so. Um with that, you know, it looks great on a computer, but then when you hook up a projector with a VGA port, it causes a little issue. So we're trying to figure that out, so we're not a hundred percent sure that that's gonna be the solution for the coming school year. Um we we have it right now, our computers are still working great, but we really do want to uh replace the units that we have for the teachers. Or make them work in a way that's um fast. And the area curriculum, we had a wonderful turnout for our art show, congratulations to Lauren Chaney. And uh thanks for the Nahat Public Library for hosting us, we had, I would say, forty attendees, forty to fifty attendees at that event. Uh really nice turnout and it was great, it's great to see folks in a a different environment, just to say hello to people and talk about their work, they were proud. To share what they had done and um so it was a nice event. And then I wanted to let you know that we're doing a pilot program on a a phonics program called Hegarty. And it is typically for preschool and kindergarten, it's an all kinesthetic phonics. Component for learning how to say words or um make sounds. Um and what letters go with sounds, and so um the teachers have a book, uh they sit in a circle. And they have a a routine, I can't really copy it, but it it looks great, kids love it. And um it's Ms. uh Ms. Fadera brought it to us from her previous school. Um you can find it online, and so we're trying it in preschool and kindergarten. And if it works out great, then we'd like to bring it to you for adoption as a formal part of our curriculum. Finally, in uh in instruction assessment and professional development, um we, I've scheduled some professional development around M-Class Dibbles. I've been talking about the new state mandate for teachers to assess students using approved assessment models. And so Dibbles is one of them and teachers are excited to learn about that, we have a date on May twenty fourth. Where M-Class will be training the teachers. Um and then we'll have a follow-up in August and again in November. About how we can use the data to really improve students' writing uh and reading skills. And then finally, we're getting ready for MCAS, uh March is the kickoff for that, we had a security meeting today. Uh very routine at this point, you know, we've been doing it on the computer for some time, all of our teachers this year are experienced in MCAS. And so I feel confident that we'll continue our achievement in that area. And that concludes my report, Madam Chair, answer questions.
You know, it sounds fantastic, thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
So moving back to the facilities update.
Thank you, Madam Chair, yeah, other than the boiler, uh the water fountains, we are waiting for the company to uh. get the water fountain. Actually, as a reminder, we're getting one more combination of water bottle filling station and water fountain. And in the two, um, currently installed other water fountains, we're having inside the wall of filters put in. Because those units actually have power already inside the wall. And it's, uh, it would be dramatically less expensive to, um, simply put filters in. So all of our water that students will and staff will have access to at the end of that project will be filtered. So the copper level, lead level, et cetera, will be zero. And then, um, we'll make sure we have plenty of filters so that we change them. Um, I have been in contact with two companies, uh, to, actually today about the gym roof. I, I came upon a new process where they actually come out, power wash the old roof and then spray it with a coating. It's supposedly good for five years and theoretically can do it up to three times, so that will be fifteen years. Um, unfortunately, the first company, which was really the number-one company in the, uh, in the country, they don't have, they don't have a representative here. So, uh, so I'm now working with another company to see, uh, how much that would cost.
Case study.
I, I simply don't know.
Mm-hmm.
But again, the gym roof, although it's really old,
Yeah.
um, and multiple layers, is not leaking, so.
It's holding up.
It's holding up. Uh, Madam Chair, I think you had a little preview of this,
Yes.
but, uh, let me give you the re- personal report. So, uh, without naming names, I wanna read a couple of sentences
Thank you.
from their resignation letters. I think when people resign, there's always a worry, you know, on a, an executive committee like yours, oh my God, what's going on? And so, um, the process of three of the individuals is complete. They have submitted their letters and I have sent them communications accepting their letters of resignation. So without telling you who they are, I wanna read portions of their letters of resignation. And I think you will, like me, be gratified at what they say about us. So one person said, quote, "Why I am saddened to leave such a remarkable educational institution. I have made a difficult decision to pursue other opportunities that align with my long-term career goals." That person then went on to personally thank, uh, several people, several people who are here this evening. But, um, another person said, quote, "Thank you for the opportunity to work in a positive, flexible and supportive environment and to have learned so many skills," unquote. And then the third one said, "Thank you for the support and opportunities you have provided me during my years here. It has been a pleasure working with you and the staff. Johnson School will always hold a special place in my heart. It has been an honor to work here." And the fourth one, I don't have a letter of resignation yet, but I'm sure it will be equally positive. So, who are these people? Well, Ruth, after many years in the district and, uh, most recently many years as our fifth and sixth-grade teacher, has decided to retire. Conrad, uh, who's been with us, uh, four years, uh, has decided to also retire. Charles, um, is going to relocate south, I believe, right?
Oh, wow.
Yep. And Maureen Locke, who was a recent hire at, um, Power Professional, has, um, her last day technically was twenty-third of February and she has been replaced by Holly.
Jaeger.
Jaeger, who was a parent and had been working as a sub here. And today, actually, um, I finished that process with Holly. So, uh, we, we are not down any staff. The other three people, Ruth, Conrad and Charles, will finish the school.
She's, oh, yeah.
They will surely be missed.
Yes.
All, everyone, every one of them.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they, you know, it's, the Johnson School is like a, a w- well-functioning team. Um, one of the things that I always learned from my coaching years, you don't want everybody to have the same skills.
Mm-hmm.
You, you want a combination of skills in people to have a, a, a hi- a highly functioning team. And that's exactly what, uh, we have had. I do wanna elaborate a little bit on the summer program. The summer program is free. It is being funded by ESAR funds. The after-school program is actually being funded by the health grant that we got. So there are two things, um, that we are taking all, full advantage of without any cost to the taxpayers whatsoever. So the staff will be, so far, Karen Jarzgo-Low will be our nurse. She's one of our subs when, uh, and she has, she knows us well. She's been subbing here for several years. Uh, Beth Shundler will be our speech and language teacher. Lydia Antrim will be the, um, special education teacher. Lou Wallach, Katie Pastor, and a yet-to-be-determined individual that the principal will hire will be our academic three teachers. And Sarah Westenberg will be our power professional. And I do wanna commend the principal for recrafting the summer program so that it now blends with the other activities in Nahat. Uh, we had come to the, uh, realization that several of the programs that were really very important to Nahat residents. Our s- our summer program, when it grew, I mean, if you remember back four or five years ago, our summer program is very small. It was basically a special education program, an extended school-year program. Now it's a program for everybody. Uh, we had heard some com- programs. Um, so what the principal did is he created a, a, a one-sheeter where, uh, he found out when the town was gonna be offering, for example, sales and other activities. And we blended our program so that we made it a five-week-on program. Three days a week, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday so that it would not compete with those other programs, which are Monday and Friday. And it goes five weeks, July ninth is the first day and August eighth is the last day. And it's basically the same amount of educational time. It may even be better having it three days a week so parents can take longer weekend, you know, long weekends, et cetera. And from the enrollment, which is basically fifty percent of our
It is.
kindergarten through, uh, fifth-grade parents.
Kids signed up, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a eight percent.
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah, uh, you know that it was a, a really good decision. And again, that was all Kevin's doing and he, he worked hard on it.
Thank you, Superintendent Parent and House.
Thank you for that.
And, Madam Chair, that is my report. I would be happy to answer any questions.
I, I, you know, I just, you know, really appreciate the time that, that both Mrs. Kovis and, and Ms. Lur are. You know, I, I, I just, I know that they're, they're favorites and, you know. Happy for them, happy to see them go. And as are my fantastic, fantastic educators. Yeah. A loss to the school, but I'm happy. Yeah, I know. It's all been so.
Um, s- here's a quick question. So the, the people that you announced that are leaving, are they all leaving at the end of the school year? Or any, because you had mentioned Ms. Jaeger taking a position. I didn't know if that was a mid-year change.
Yeah, um, Madam Chair, for you. Maureen Locke, the Power Professional, left as of February twenty-third and has been replaced by Holly Jaeger. And the other three people, Ruth Conrad and Charles, they, they all will be here through the end of the school year.
That's nice. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I can move on to whole business, fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your packet, you have a copy, a hard copy of the budget presentation that I made to the finance committee on Thursday. I wanna thank the chair for being there with, with me and introducing me. Um, it was a very long evening. It was one hour and about forty minutes. A lot of questions, a lot of discussion. I think it went very well. I did not hear or see any members of the finance committee, um, that, in my opinion, without actually hearing a vote or seeing anything, uh, I don't think there's any that won't support our budget at the level it's at.
That's going to be. Yeah, I, I really get that sense of.
Yeah. I think the slide that made so much sense to them is the, the one I added this year, which, um, showed that the four biggest impactors to our budget, the one additional classroom teacher, the Essex Tech tuition, the Swam Scott tuition increase, including the sixth-grade, uh, additional cost and the out-of-district tuitions, exceeded the total increase of the budget. So with that as a basis for the budgets going up less than the uncontrollable costs are going up, they're really, um, I think they appreciated that perspective. And, um, a lot of very positive comments.
Yeah, nice job.
Thank you.
So in regard to the superintendent's search update, we are just finalizing the agenda. Um.
It's in the packet.
Which is in the packet, very nice.
Yep. Yeah, Madam Chair, I, I took the liberty of putting the Tuesday, March twenty-sixth and Mar- and Monday, March twenty-fifth tentative schedules in the packet so members of the community and members of the school committee could see them. I didn't know if you wanted to approve it or not. I don't think it has to be approved. But, or, and you may have, you may wanna change something also.
I think you can use it for default usage.
No.
If not.
No, I don't.
Yeah, I think you can just move on in case we decide to tweak it.
Okay. So, Madam Chair, would you like me to send this to, um, our consultant or would you like to?
I, I.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll send it to them.
You need, you can have it electronic.
I, I have.
You have, right?
So moving on to those policy manual plan. I know that you've been hard at work trying to get them all done before you leave us, so thank you.
You're very welcome. So let me give you an update.
Well, was there I go?
To date, we have either amended or inserted ninety-two policies in your policy manual.
Wow.
This evening, you have seventeen policies for the second reading. And the best day of the year so far, we have thirty policies for first reading. Now, the reason for that is we wanted to get the policy manual finished before the end of April, when the school committee would change. Um, so, that's a hundred and forty-eight. Then, on the ninth of February, excuse me, the ninth of March of, uh, April, I apologize, we will have the last nine to review. The second, um, the second reading of the first, the thirty that we're gonna read to- tonight are going to be on the twenty-sixth. I didn't put any new policies on that one because you have an interview.
Right. I appreciate it.
So I skipped that. So on the ninth will be the first reading of the last nine to review and then the reading of sixteen for removal.
Okay, okay. See you.
And that will finish us. So we have the seventeen for second reading and approval this evening, the first reading of thirty this evening, the second reading on the twenty-sixth. No first reading on the twenty-sixth. On the ninth, we have the first reading of, of nine, very small number, and the, the removal is gonna be simple.
Yeah.
You've heard about most of them already. Um, those sixteen, but they also have to be done twice. So on the, um,
Third.
On the twenty-third of April, you will have the second reading and approval of the, the last nine and the removal of the sixteen. And will be done. And that will mean that we have either removed or inserted or amended one hundred and sixty-four policies, which is basically half of.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So with that said, before we dive into the policies, you know, we can look at the school calendars.
Yeah, the, Madam Chair, these are simply the school calendars as you approved them last time with the appropriate, uh, approval date at the top, which wasn't on it last time because you didn't approve them last time.
Perfect.
Okay.
You're gonna sign, yeah.
And I'll repost them on the website once you, I have them, I guess. With the approval date.
Yep, okay.
Sounds good. All right, we're at seven F, Kevin. It's time to run, unless you wanna stay and join us.
All right, thank you. Hope you have a good evening.
Thank you. Right, how are we going to do this since we're back? Um, you want me to read Gina and?
Yeah, and I'll second it as we go.
Okay.
All right, um, I'll make a motion to approve policy EBB first reading. Uh, I mean, second reading, uh, first aid.
And then, Madam Chair, I don't wanna take any more time because we have a lot to do, but I do want you to know that anything that referred to a health issue, a first aid issue, et cetera, I have had a lengthy conversation with our school nurse and she is totally aware of what we're doing.
Thanks.
And supportive.
Oh, thank you.
Can I have a second?
Second. Can you hear me?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve policy EBC. And. Um, emergency plan, second reading. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. I'll make a motion to approve policy EC, Buildings and Grounds Management, second reading.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve policy ECAF, Security Cameras and Tools, second reading. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve policy EEAE, Pool Bath Safety Program, second reading.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve policy EEAEC, Student Conduct on Pool Bath, second reading. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Madam Chair, for the discussion, I just wanna make sure the language I inserted here is acceptable to the school.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, oh yeah. I'll make a motion to approve policy EFC, Free and Reduced Price Food Services, second reading. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. I'll make a motion to approve policy HA, Negotiation Goals, second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve policy HB, Negotiations, Legal Status, second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve policy HF, School Committee Negotiation Agents, second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to. I'll make a motion to approve policy KA, School Community Relation Goals, second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve policy KBE, Relations with Parent/Booster Organizations, second reading. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve policy KDB, Public's Right to Know, second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve policy KDD, News Media Relations/News Releases, second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve policy LBC, Relations with Non-Cublic Schools, second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the new first reading of policies.
Madam Chair, item eight A is the policy manual introduction draft. So the, after all the policies are done, there's, in the current manual and in your package, there's a revision history that was done by the, the, the school committee that was in, uh, seeded from two thousand twelve to two thousand fifteen. I don't know if you want a revision history, if you want to mention the school committee members who reviewed the document, how you want to, to do this page. But the rest of the introduction is boilerplate. You know, how to use the manual, what the letters mean, how it's organized. But again, I'm not sure this is what the school committee wants the introduction to look like. Uh, the only thing missing from these five pages at the very end would be the date of your final approval.
I can do that. But this, you know, in terms of all the revisions, well, that'll be several pages, I think it's worthless.
Yeah, yeah, you may wanna just do, Madam Chair, or the, a member of your school committee maybe just wanna do a, a one paragraph, or just, you know, during the year, blank, the blank, you know, these were revised.
Revised, yes.
Members of the school committee were blank.
Blank, yes. I think so, because there's a lot of changes and then to have revision history of, there's a lot, there are many that were, and, and MASC, that documentation if they ever need or if it's for it.
Oh, absolutely.
So I don't, I don't know that we need to duplicate it here.
Yeah, I think a, a nice opening paragraph, because this is kind of cold.
Oh yeah, no, no, we're, we need some kindness.
Okay. And if you, obviously, Madam Chair, if you want help, or please just let me know. So, these are eight B through eight double E. And I will go quickly. Uh, GBEA Staff Ethics/Conflict of Interest. There's a current policy and a new policy that takes into account the updated two thousand twenty-two state wa- laws and the requirements for trainings. Uh, and I obviously recommend that you incorporate the new version of that policy. Policy GBEB Staff Conduct is updated, and this actually reduces some of the legal references to, and simply refers to Massachusetts General Law seventy-one thirty-seven H, which is important. Um, because the regulations that this, your current policy refers to, in my opinion, don't exist anymore. Because they've been supplanted by state law. It's also much simpler, and it does not state that you have policies involving, uh, what I would say is archaic language, faithfulness. Okay? Please stop me anytime.
Well, we will, we're not shy.
Oh, I know. And that's good. Policy GBEBC gives to and solicitations by the staff. This one got a complete rework based on the, the new ethics laws. And the, the one currently in our manual is completely out of alignment.
Yeah. So one thing I thought about this is, um, you know, with, uh, the classroom parents, it's important for them to know about the class gift rule. They could have made sure that, you know, they would all know that this is a manual or that it's a policy, so, you know, at the beginning. Yeah, whoever's in, in charge of that program to make sure that they're aware of this.
Yeah, Madam Chair, that's an excellent point. Our staff is pretty aware of it because every year we have to go online and take the ethics course.
Right.
And it asks, everything in here is a question that we get asked every year.
Right. But the parents who are in the rooms may not know that, yeah.
Yeah.
So we need to relay that.
There wasn't, yeah. So, uh.
So I can tell you that the, um, the PTO has, um, you know, compiled a list of class parents, and they send an email at the beginning of the year. Um, and that, um, I, Mariana's the pres- like, I know that, you know, James and Mariana are co-presidents, but they, Mariana's sort of taken that role. So I think that she would be a good person to connect with because I don't remember that that's on the list of information that she signs out. But I agree with you, Michelle, a new parent wouldn't, you know, who's helping come, you know, especially with younger kids who hasn't gone through it with the upper grades, they wouldn't know that there's a limit as to how much that can be given to the teacher, and it'd be great. Just so that avoids an uncomfortable situation, because I understand that the teacher can obviously decline it, but it'd be pretty uncomfortable.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, um, I'll talk to Kevin about how to get it to class parents, uh, once it's approved, obviously.
Yeah.
And then the PTO will make sure the PTO is aware of it too.
That's great.
The principal may choose to put it in the student handbook, I don't know.
I know.
I'm this way about that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, policy GB, EBB is a policy about online fundraising and solicitations dash crowdfunding. And obviously, since the term crowdfunding can't be more than seventy years old, it, this is completely new, we don't have this one in our handbook. And it lays out lots of specifics about how fu- fundraising and solicitations must be done by district employees. This one particularly being drawn up by the attorneys, I would suggest we just leave it alone, because anything I change is probably, probably gonna be a problem. The nice thing about this, typically, the bold at the end of a policy I cross out, I think it's important to leave the definition of crowdfunding
Yeah.
and some examples.
Examples are helpful. The examples are helpful.
Yeah.
Okay.
Policy GB EC, Drug-Free Workplace Policy. Once again, this has been reworked to fit, um, the updated general laws of two thousand twenty-two. And, um, if you look at the legal reference of our current policy, it's archaic nineteen eighty-eight. So, it's, it's good to update it. And I recommend that we do so. Policy GBGB, which is Staff, Personnel, Security, and Safety. When I read this, I wondered if there was a comma missing between staff and personnel. But other than that, uh, it's been simplified and updated to meet the Mass General Laws of two thousand twenty-two. Staff, Personnel, Security, uh, maybe not, maybe it's.
The same and other.
Yeah, I think it's all right. And I recommend that we change it. We're taking some of the extraneous language out. Um, for example, in our current one, there's a ninety-day reference. It's not the law. Policy GBGE is a Domestic Violence Leave Policy. This is new. And I wanted to leave the note in for this evening, but typically, I, you know, I will eliminate this, but I think it's important for us as we review the policy to note what the attorneys have said. That the school, the school committee should seek the advice of counsel, deliberate, determine whether or not to change the following language in the first paragraph. To make this leave paid or unpaid, or to make the employee exhaust other leave options or not.
And I, I also had a question about the employer of less than fifteen employees. The employer is the town in that one, or the government, or?
That's an excellent question.
Yeah.
Uh, we have our, we go by the town handbook unless there's language in our negotiated contract that differs.
Okay. I don't, I don't remember that we have one in the negotiated contract for this.
We, uh, I don't think we have.
I mean, I, I would, I would like to say my opinion on this is that if that somebody is in a situation that the leave should be paid. I agree. You know, I think that that situation is tough enough and then to have to not get compensated for, for the time off that you need to take care of yourself. So I would be in favor of having it paid. That's what I'm.
Yeah, um, in my seven-plus years here, there has been one instance where, um, this policy would have been used, and in that case, I, I interfaced very closely with the town attorney and the town administrator. And I think that's a key, so that we were all on the same page.
So we can change this policy and have it be paid. Yeah, I think that that, that would be my recommendation. If I'm, if I'm allowed to make that. Of course. Oh, that's all.
So if I may be so bold as to really zoom in, I'm hearing that the first page.
Third paragraph.
Third paragraph.
Shall be paid.
The employer. This leave shall be paid.
Paid, exactly.
Paid leave.
Where?
Make it simple.
The. Oh, yes, yes, the third paragraph.
Okay. I will make that change before the second reading.
Also, you know, again, I don't, I don't know about the next sentence either, and employees, you can suchly shall exhaust all annual or occasionally personal leave and sick leave available to the employee for any request and or taken domestic bound leave, so I wouldn't be in favor of that language, only again, because I think, you know, this is a special leave and shouldn't be, you know, removed from a person's regular leave that they're allowed, it's their further contract, but again, you know, that's my opinion on the matter. I don't know, we should.
Uh, you know, I'd be interested to know how other similar sort of crisis situations are addressed. I mean, not similar, but like another, for example, if there was a, you know, a, a death or significant illness in the family.
That's SMLA.
Okay.
So that's a separate thing.
Yeah, that's.
Right, that makes sense.
Yeah, and they're for reading.
I understand. I'm try- is there any other similar situation that we could think of or comparable? I just don't know how these are typically addressed.
Yeah, and, and other, you know, state contracts that they, the agency like that, they do have a domestic bound leave that's separate.
Okay, that's great. And that's something, the right thing to do.
Yeah, yeah.
So my understanding, just so we're on the same page, is that if person A had twelve days of leave plus three personal days, that they would get fifteen additional days.
Yeah, and so it would obviously have to be supporting documentation to, to support that this is the type of leave that they need to take. And again, I think that would be, you know, like, as you had said with, you know, the town administration and your legal, just to ensure that, you know, if it's used correctly, um, it would be like up to fifteen days. For, for that purpose, right.
The, uh, the confidentiality part of this is, um, critical, crucial. And having dealt with it once, here, multiple times, other places, it's criti- it's crucially important for the school district administration in a tiny place like this to not communicate any of the details to anyone. The good thing is that I have started a totally separate health file that is not connected in any way to the personnel file. Because there are parts of the personnel file that are subject to, uh, the Freedom of Information Act, whereas none of the health record file can be, um, read by anyone other than the person authorized to handle the file, which is me, the superintendent, uh, without a subpoena from a judge.
Yeah.
So this information would be in that file and could only be reached by a subpoena, which is the way we want it. And, and this is obviously related, the Family Medical Leave Act. Very simple because the Family Medical Leave Act is gigantic.
Yeah.
I have a, uh, between the forms and the documents, probably fifteen pages. So this basically says, we're gonna follow the law. And obviously, we are. That's GBGF, F for family, you know.
Family.
GBI, Staff Participation in Political Activities. Once again, this is an interesting one because not much is changing, except the legal reference, which there's two changes, and obviously, we should have the current legal reference. GCEA. GCEA, Professional Staff Salary Schedules. The current one separates. Teachers, principals and administrators. The recommended one separates teachers and the second category as principals and administrators on individual contracts. And that's a really good idea. The only thought I had about this one. Is this says, the school committee, with the advice of the superintendent, will establish levels of compensation for each position. Based on the circumstances, dynamics, requirements of each position. That's not the standard operating position procedure in this district. The standard operating procedure, and I'm pointing this out, not so you can change the language. Because you probably don't want to, you want the school committee to retain the right to do that. But. Since I've been here, the school committee has allowed the superintendent. To establish all of the contract parameters without. Discussion with the school committee, other than in the budget document. So for example, if I were going to give our director of special education a raise next year. This policy seems to say that you're gonna do it with my advice, but that's not how it's been done. I don't think there have been any problems with the way it's been done. Obviously, we've been in a very solid and stable financial position with the way it's been done. Uh and uh but that's not my call, that's your call. So I wanted to point that out. So my recommendation is leave the language the way it is. And if you want to continue on the the past practice of allowing the superintendent to do it. Which is typically the way it's done nowadays. I think, I mean, these are MASC policies, so they're gonna protect the rights of the school committee. But the way the Mass General Law works now. Is everybody works for the superintendent, except the superintendent who works for the school committee. That's the way it works. And when I read that, I said, hmm, that's interesting.
I don't see it being much different, though, from.
No.
The what's in there, and I think, you know, it does give you leeway because prior to July first and then also um. You you know, it's asking for your advice and then evidence from you to support your recommendation, so. I feel like it's open enough.
So do I.
Yeah.
I just wanted to be clear to you who are voting on this policy, that that's not what we both do.
Yeah.
I show you the budget, and then I always stay within the budget. But you can, for example, with the next superintendent at some point, say. I wanna see a list of what you're paying every, you know, all the contracts, I wanna see what you're paying someone, and I wanna see what you propose as a raise for fiscal twenty six. You have that authority under this policy. You had that authority under the previous policy. I just. It hasn't done. Okay? But I definitely recommend that you um. Approve the new policy. GCBB, Employment of Principal.
Or Principal Bob's.
Yeah.
You wanna change it to principal? I'll never see us having Principal Bob's.
Yeah, I don't think we'll ever have the principal.
You want me to take the S F?
No, I mean.
No, okay.
It doesn't matter.
Then you have to do throughout the whole document. And if if we ever we just, the we needed principal. The policy allows for it. Okay, oh, oh, optimistic one, that we're gonna outgrow the school.
The uh change is um. The fourth, the third paragraph doesn't use, well, it's not really a paragraph, the third paragraph, it's only one sentence, so it's not a paragraph. Basically says, everything will follow the law, which is really good to have in there. So I recommend you adapt that change. Uh GCF, Professional Staff Hiring. Um very, very close to the current policy. With the exception that it establishes um more responsibilities for the superintendent. And gives a more clear concept of what race. And other um guideline, excuse me. What race is and the guidelines for avoiding um discrimination. Which is, I think, a good idea. And this is up to date. This is now the full list of state discrimination categories. And I recommend that you adopt it. GCF. GCG, Part-Time and Substitute Professional Staff Employment. This one, the new one says substitute professional staff employment. Have no idea why part-time teachers have been taken out. I have been functioning under the current policy and following it exactly with part-time teachers. So if uh I'll make it real simple, if a full-time teacher made ten dollars. And somebody was a point-two teacher, they made two dollars. So I have been following this.
I'm wondering if they are breaking out part-time teachers somewhere else. I don't mind having this, well, just for substitutes only. It doesn't seem to go. Part-time.
Let me look at my list. Yes. Good call.
Yeah, I will make this as temporary.
Yep. Okay, so I recommend you you do that one, you approve that one, and later we will get to. Other things that probably will. Close the circle. GCIA, Philosophy of Staff Development. This again, updated and is a little less worthy. And a little bit more specific. Professional Teacher Status, um this is always a fun one. So professional teacher status has typically been handled in one of two ways in districts. A big deal or a little deal. A big deal is districts that, for whatever reason, have chosen to have ceremonies. Have special evaluation processes in the third year of someone's employment. Have extra observations, have um get opinions from a variety of people, surveys, confidential surveys. And um I've never done that in any of my districts. My philosophy of professional teacher status has always been. I try not to get a teacher to the end of their third year, or it's clear to every, to the staff member. That they will not get professional teacher status. I mean, I can give you a couple of very curt sentences that helps that. For example, if you're not sure about somebody's teaching quality, don't rehire them for the third year.
Right.
Which makes all of that paperwork and all of that gnashing of teeth unnecessary, in my opinion. So I. I support the simplicity of the amended. Language. I did want to explain that to you because um in this district, this school committee is pretty much not even been aware. This, but the principal and I have not appointed people. Historically here in my tenure. Again, not waiting for the third year.
That that, yeah, that means a lot.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it it could be that. Generally speaking, that makes all the sense in the world. It could be that. The principal's unsure, and that third year will be important. But again, I think the communication, we're so small that there there's dialogue, you know, there's. You know, there's not five hundred teachers, so you know, you're dealing with masses. Uh GDB, Support Staff Contracts and Compensation Plans. This is very clear. Uh and again, it conforms to the updated Mass General Laws about overtime. Educational Equity is not in our current uh. Handbook, and I recommend that we. Add it. Educational Opportunities for Military Children, not in our current handbook. And the reason is not because we um have not recognized this in the law, because. I amended this part of the handbook. At the most, four years ago, maybe even three. Uh but it's with foster children. It it's it's a combination. What the MAS is recommending is a separate policy.
Yeah.
And it's because there is now an interstate compact on educational opportunity for military children. So I recommend we do that. Obviously, I recommend that we also have the same of respect. And notice for uh the educational opportunities for children in foster care, which is GFABF. The J H D, the Exclusions and Exceptions from School Attendance. Is um a little bit different, but not much, and again, the legal references have been reiterated, and they've been cleaned up. Recommend that you do that one. Student Publications is not in the current handbook, uh uh policy manual. It's J I C E. And I was thinking about, maybe we don't need this, because, but we do have a yearbook. Which you may not think is a student publication, you may think of it as an adult publication. And there are in our upper grades potentials for students to publish um books of their work. So I think it's a good thing to put in. The current J I H is Interrogation and Searches. The recommended language is reversed to Searches and Interrogations. Uh and I recommend that we put this in as updated. Not a lot different. Other than the updating. Uh Policy JJ, Co-curricular and Extracurricular Activities. Um this is another one that I thought of not including, and then I thought co-curricular activities. Are the activities. That. Are in the curricular day and could extend outside the curricular day. Example would be B A. So we do have one or two. We don't have, at this point, any extracurriculars, but I don't think it's necessary to change it. Because I think the guidance and the the guideline should be the the same. And the language has been significantly cleaned up. There's a lot of assistance by the parents of the original one, which. We don't need. Okay?
Yeah, fundraising.
That's JJ.
J A E.
Student Fundraising Activities, J J E. Uh this one got a little bit more complicated because of the updates in the law, uh but again, the uh it's it clarifies. Legend. It it clarifies that um the superintendent needs to be. Suppr- uh apprised of and needs to approve fundraising activities.
The the one question I had on this one, because I know in the past we've done some jump over the heart. And the second to last paragraph says, students may not be rewarded with additional recessed snacks, activities or any type of prize for having raised larger amounts. Of funds or reaching fundraising goals, and that's really um focused on that. And so I didn't know if if that that is a change in the law. Um and if so, you know, those types of, I you know, I would hate to not have that program. That they, you know, any type of health program, such as the cause. So I'm not really sure what they were going for. I I guess I could understand the perspective, but. You know, I think many of those charitable donation company or organizations have that sort of tier. Fundraising goal. You bring up a really good point. I'm just. Yeah.
It's a very good point. I think the school committee can do several things, and one, you could remove that parenthetical completely.
But I I guess I wouldn't wanna do that outside of, like you said, the law saying that, that's. You know what I mean, I'm not familiar with. With that change. Why that change is in there.
We need to do some research on it. The other thing the school committee can do is is mimic the language in the par- in the paragraph above. Where you're discouraging it. If you wanna discourage, I'm not sure you do.
It wouldn't discourage, I guess they don't wanna discourage participation in the organization for their fundraising goals. I I think I understand what they're trying to get at with that. I I just, I'm not sure. I think it's a good program. I think it's a good way to get well in our health and it's, you know. I don't wanna take it. I wouldn't want.
Do you want this, if it stays?
If it stays, we have to consider. Not doing that program. Or or asking a judgment like.
Do you want me to consider, let me, if if there's not a law that says you can't do that, I'm not aware of any if there is, but I'll I'll I'm gonna do my research. Uh one of the things we could do is, students may not be rewarded with additional recesses or snacks.
Yeah, maybe like, yes, that type of.
Cause that, that doesn't feel good to me.
Right, I yeah, like I said, I can get the point of that stuff, but. I mean, I think. You you'd be asking these charitable organizations to. you'd be asking these charitable organizations to rearrange their, kind of their goals. You know, and I guess it's like kind of defeating the going, you know? Whatever you can do to make it work. I appreciate it.
Okay, I'll have some language on the, on that for you.
Thank you.
Second reading. JJE, student activity accounts, a lot more words, a lot more details because it involves money.
Accounts with a maximum balance that exceed 25,000, the school committee should consider that it ought to be conducted by outside audit form every three years. That just seems a very tiny amount of money for an audit. It's a, um, it's poor, consider.
I know.
Looking at that, we'll wait a minute now. Consider it. Consider. It's not needed. I mean, yeah, what was for the cost of not it, I spend that dollar. Right, just like at the page on the front. Then we have the student activity account. But we get the money from like the recycling of the, to go into those accounts, right?
I believe so. I don't even know.
My money isn't. Yeah. Was the PTO within that seven count? I mean, it says consider. Yeah, right. Shocked. It's very small balance.
I'm not sure this is correct anymore. Let me look into this one.
Okay.
Because we have just been approved for not requi, I'm trying to figure out how to say this without being so grammatically ugly. It's horrible. We have just been approved by the D E S C to only, to only need to have an audit one out of every three years because the size of a district is so small. It was so small. And I was just communicating with the director of finance of the Department of Elementary and Secretary of Education about that today. So I have a feeling that this refers only to student activity accounts, not revolving accounts. But I'll ask Allison and I'll ask our auditors. The only thing I know that goes into our revolving account is our specific things that I have approved for that money to go in. For example, the recent, the recent seats for the clothing donations. That goes into the student revolving account. But the, in my opinion, the annual donation from Northeastern University is not in a student activity account. That's in a specified revolving account. But I will get some clarity on that. One of the things that this says is if you look at number three, checking accounts, the last sentence, checking accounts will be audited annually in accordance with the D E S C guidelines, whether or not the guidelines are. So I don't know what to do.
We say be audited in accordance with D E S C guidelines and get rid of the word any.
Yeah. Graduating class funds. Um, no, this is more JJE. I'm sorry. Interscholastic athletics, obviously, we don't have it.
Is that something that we need?
Is that something that we need?
I don't think so.
If ever we did, you didn't, you know, add it, yeah.
Okay. Nope. That's one, 29. Student welfare. This is the current one. The, uh, the new recommendation has been reviewed by MASC in 2021. Um, and it's a little bit different, but not much. And I recommend we amend ours to match the recommendation of the MASC attorneys. Uh, student health services and requirements. It's been reviewed by Cheryl. Again, the current one is not that old. But if you notice, if you look at the, um, the new one, I made a lot of edits after, you know, based on my conversation with Cheryl. And obviously, I recommend what Cheryl told me. Uh, Cheryl wants, or recommends that the school committee approve the new language with the exception of the parenthetical that I crossed out.
Similar to your personal, yeah, okay.
Uh, we don't do personal visits. I mean, I, I don't even know why that's there. I mean, I've never been in a school district where a member of your staff would be required to do a personal visit to someone's home.
I think with some special education schools have.
Yes.
That may.
Yeah. Oh, did? Maybe.
Maybe.
Not sure. And obviously, I mean, you know, as the former superintendent in Somerville, uh, I had attendance officers. And if necessary, they were accompanied by a police officer. You know, so it's, it's something I would frown upon in today's world.
Last values.
This is the one we've been waiting for. JQ.
He's a friend.
It's not the magazine. It's the policy. Student fines, fees, and charges has been updated to, uh, in 2021. It's very little difference, but obviously, I recommend that we update our policy.
Okay. So we're done with the second of the first reading of the policies. Do we have any other committee business that we want to discuss?
I don't.
I don't either.
I don't either. Are there any other additional announcements that we want to make?
No, no. Okay. But I have a motion to convene into executive session. I'll make a motion to enter into executive session, not to reconvene to open session, to read and approve amendments of the executive session on 2/27/24 and to conduct a strategy session with respect to negotiation of a contract with non-union personnel for 2024, 2025 school. I have a second.
I'll second. 837.
Yeah.
Call him, favor.
I can come there. I can come there. Alan's here. Do you want me, I can come there. I'll be there in a few minutes.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, I'll be right there.
Okay, Gina, thank you.